Need a motion for the previous member?
I'll second the motion.
And discuss it, all in favor, say aye. Improve a monthly claim, we're going to do that now. You have to, Bob.
Just about got through the highway. What finished that?
Number three, need better activity hospital financing. If you've got the chairman here.
Well, see the same thing, the receivables are, I forget what they are, they're worth six two, our issuance of receivables will not be for those before. They're around five five, it's under five five right now. About 1.7 million in the bank. So the cash flow is pretty good. We still have an over ninety, that's what, twenty percent, thirty percent of receivables? Yeah, thirty-five percent, which is where they're working on that. We've got some receipt report here from both the private insurance and Medicare and Medicaid. We need to see some improvement there, because that's where a couple million bucks is sitting. But other than that, the system's working well now. The motor hospital today, running good bill, pretty quickly. But slowly but surely making progress. The lady who has our account, which we're firmly contracted with, will be here, I think it's next month. So we'll go over again with her. But we're seeing some progress.
It's good to see your cash on hand. Dave's cash on hand keeps creeping up there every time. He's now pretty sure they're about a year and a half ago or something like that.
Yeah, making progress. Couple new service lines are coming on, a sleep study, the sleep lab is open. And we'll start soon to get the certification from the insurance companies for payment. And then the mental health, social services, she's on board and seeing patients. So those were two big additions of services that we needed here for some time, we just couldn't find people. And we think we're pretty happy with the people that are down there.
Did you ever talk to her on the phone calls that I've been?
Yes, I did. Did she not get back to you? Okay, she was gone on those issues, remember?
Yeah.
Father died, but I did talk, I will, I will prober.
Okay. Yeah, what, what I talked to Dan about was that, you know, when you pick up that phone, you need to answer it immediately. And then you need to follow through the next day after they've been there. That's just to show you really care. And, and that's, we've, I kind of fell short at that different times. And that's something that's easy to correct, just gotta do it.
Patient's gone now?
No, yet patient, like you call in and get, don't, the phone don't ring ten times before they pick the phone up. Should be the second ring. And then after you've been there, then they should call and say, did you treat you right, did you feel better, what, the next day or two?
Heard complaints about the hospital or doctor, all of that.
Right. Right. Okay, number four.
Just a meeting agenda for Benoit so I don't have any meeting today.
Fourteen. I looked at agenda over this month, if anything is immediately affecting us.
Briling permit, five.
Yeah, Stan Smith sent a letter to you guys. Wanting you to direct me to sign off on his building permit, his ag building permit. There's still, I checked with Tina and I checked with Donna, and Tina's here, we want to call her in. He has still neglected to get us some critical pieces of information to complete his building permit.
Which pieces?
He needs to qualify for an ag permit. So first of all, we're not sure if he put the wrong, um, he has several parcels. One is in timber and one is in ag. And the piece that he said he was putting the shop on was actually the one that's in timber. So we're not sure if that was a mistake. So we need to confirm that with him. And then you have to put like a list of items that you want in an ag building that you'd be storing.
Designate what was to be used, or I think.
Yep. And we're still missing that.
We're right where we were. That's where we were last night.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so, you want to talk to him, or?
Yeah, he actually called me and he was also concerned about how the way his check was handled versus the way he thought it should have been. I think, you know, Stan is a, is a tree farmer, he is a organic farmer also. And where he wants to put his building is designated as timber, but that's, according to Tina, we couldn't put a, you don't get the egg exemption if it's on timber land.
Correct.
But, you know, silviculture is a form of agriculture, or, you know, growing trees.
She's just going off of what her codes say.
So we've actually got a flaw in the whole code system there.
So how do, so, how do we correct that? I mean, we can't correct that, so we gotta, I guess we gotta sit down and talk to him, huh? You want to do that?
Yeah, I'll talk to him again. But does it make, but it won't make any difference if?
Well, don't we have, don't, we have to have two people give the, maybe the permit to Dyson and him two come together and try to,
Yeah.
Try to make a, gotta make it work, because he's?
Because I know, you know, other building, other tay sheds or storage sheds have been put on land that isn't designated, you know, just cultivated agricultural land in the county. And it's been approved, so.
That's been several years ago, and when the state stepped in, they're the ones who corrected us on that.
Yeah.
With all the codes that we should have been following, and we weren't. So we've been doing it that way since we contracted with the state, this way that I'm telling you now. So however long ago that was.
So was the state mandate then?
Well, that's the codes that we're following.
Yeah.
Well, I'll go with you if you want to.
Yeah, somehow we gotta.
We gotta compromise. He's kind of riding our head a little bit, so.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
So. Okay.
Okay. Corlin based the meeting on the twenty-second and call out, yeah?
Call out, yeah.
I'll call you on that field when we get closer, huh?
And you guys both got a, like a little bound booklet for that meeting, okay?
Right there. Same thing that's there every time?
Yep.
Same, same message, same people.
This one right here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Number seven. Corlon tribe, Seattle County.
Yeah, a letter from the tribe. At this time, the tribe is seeking recommendation of Benoit County for representatives to serve on this board. It's their, I think it's coordinate lake board that the tribe has of their own.
We've had that for years, haven't we?
Yeah. And I think we haven't had a representative over there in several years, so.
Some reasons we didn't have, so.
Anyways, they're saying we can submit a name if we want it to be considered as representative.
Okay. Number eight.
Did you? The city contract?
Yeah. So commissioners, I don't see that in my packet for you, but what that is, is a building inspector services agreement for the county to perform, to continue to perform building inspector services for the city. But only the building inspector portion of it. And the city to do the rest of their permit review over at the city, as we previously discussed. The, the fee would be the same as it is now, the county keeps the building permit fee and then the city can collect a administrative fee on top of that. It's a, it would be effective June one.
So who's gonna do that?
So Tina, Tyson, over here.
I know what Tina's gonna do, who's gonna do it for the city?
At the city, they have a, a new hire. Gosh, I'm not sure if I remember her name, Shauna maybe? I don't remember her name, I'm sorry. That they've hired, she's been working for the city for a few months now, just part-time, but I think they're gonna turn that into a full-time position. But they've got someone hired that works at the city that's gonna do that.
So hopefully this will resolve the code enforcement issues that we've been running into with the city.
Correct, but the problem that Tina has been running into is that the city's not doing their own code compliance review. So that it becomes a problem for her when she's trying to do the building permit review just to make sure everything for the city is taken care of. So it's at the request of the county and very much of the request of the city as well. It's the same contract that you have with Plumber. Everybody thinks the arrangement with Plumber works well. That's, that's what this is.
So Tina's gonna be the inspector for the city then?
Tina would continue to do the building inspector. So the, the state building codes that the county and the city have adopted, we adopt them because the state requires us to with some modifications. But they're the same, primarily the same codes that the county's adopted as the city and the state building codes. So she still expects that, but that's about the structure. The, the building itself, not where it's located on the lot as far as setbacks or zoning.
Or if surveys are required, or if.
So Tina is gonna do the structure inspection?
Yes. The city doesn't have anybody that's licensed to do that.
Does the city even reverse the county for that?
Well, it did, yeah.
So the county gets the building inspector.
But the, but the problem is, they gotta be in harmony, or that ain't gonna work either.
They do have to work.
Together.
The city needs some training and understanding as to what their role is opposed to what the county's role is.
Are you aware of that, Jim?
Some, we do have some help. We've got the planner from Cootney County who's got three or four or five years experience, so we'll be able to help.
Okay, because that, that'll be the key to that, to do that work.
Is that, and we, our building inspector have time to do her countywide job.
She's been doing this, so this has actually been less than what she's been doing.
Less than, because she, she'll be out of it, oh, she has the one thing to do, inspection. She's been involved.
A little bit of a clarification of what her duties are. We have a contract between the city and the county, but it's, it's older and it's when the county was contracting with the state to do those. And the city was kind of piggybacking on the county. And so this is more reflect what the current role is and has been, and to clarify that. It's not any additional duties for Tina. In fact, maybe a little bit less than what she's been doing.
And I don't know if I'm just gonna have to print that out, or like, I couldn't remember where I had a copy of it. That's what it was.
You, I had a copy emailed to me.
Okay, that's what, couldn't remember if I, I bet I forwarded it and deleted my email.
I don't, I don't see one here.
Yeah, I worked on them yesterday, I couldn't find it either.
Now, it says action item on that, do we need a motion to, or does, have you had a chance to read that agreement over the law?
Which ones are up though?
The one we just talked about.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you see it, Jack?
Yeah.
Okay. I move we approve the agreement.
Give me a second. Sorry. Any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nine.
Approve the contract. Seems like they could take these DIBCO regulations, they're long on the asterisk.
I know. Yeah, I believe it was. Okay, so the next one is the DIBCO. So they take care of the federal building, the courthouse, the Luby building and the transfer station. And our current contract ends at the end of June, so they have new contracts here. Contracts are the same, with just a two percent increase on each facility. I'd like to stick with them.
Okay.
Shane really knows the systems pretty well. Whatever you guys want.
We shall have.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
And you, discuss in all in favor, say aye.
Sounds like the PD doesn't want to go to therapy now.
Yeah.
Change shoulders and stuff. But keep her happy. Aye.
Idaho Department of Land Waterline application. What is that on?
Yeah, we just gave.
You just gave the federal building, right?
Yeah. No, we didn't, we just, we don't.
No.
No.
Two, two different things.
Two different, oh, we're on ten then?
Yes.
Okay, what's the, what's that? Oh, that's, yeah, go ahead.
So they came over and were asking about some, just, I feel like small things. Painting some of their offices inside at their own cost, doing it themselves. They want to update this wooden sign out here with a different, same, would take up the same space, but just, when you were assigned, you know, before service sign. The, they want a, like an informational kiosk. Anyway, most of that, yeah, that's fine, it was all kind of inside their building or just replacing something that was already there. But what they did also address is that now that the weather's warming up, that their upstairs conference room gets pretty warm. And I talked to DIBCO, Shane. And again, without those new units, there's not a lot he can do. And so I said I'd ask where we're at on the new units. I know we still have that roof issue, we still.
Well, we've got a different crane, so we'll bring the crane up and see if we can reach that.
Okay.
If we can reach that from the ground, you know, it's still a dirty job, but we won't, we can do it in one bite.
Okay.
So, but.
I just wanted to keep it in, in mind that
Yeah.
as the weather warms up, I think those units, those two that, you know, the condensers and the motors and whatever we're going out of, they're gonna be probably not keeping up.
And that's, well, them two, the problem with that is you, if we go up there and do all that, we, I don't, maybe I ought to think about the third one. They want to go up there again, we don't have to.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's, we'll get a little closer, we'll.
Okay.
And there's the issue of taking the roof off of the things also.
The thing of it is, you gotta be able to reach that, to pick, pick that roof off.
Yeah.
And if you can do that.
Do it without, taking a piece of?
The other crane reached out here and done this and that, but this one's reaching longer, so maybe we'll do it.
There's some cranes down here at the bridge.
Couldn't get it in the corner where it's got to go.
And here, I need you to sign off on the DIBCO contracts too. There's several things.
Probably get some plan of action then to get those new little units put in there sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a hot summer. Besides, they're just sitting there not being utilized. A little expensive to spend units too.
They were, yeah.
Corlon eleven is ten.
Okay. Just an application to put, requesting a permit for a water line on the St. Joe. Let's see. If we have any comments, we can, we have until May twenty-eighth to make any comments, and it is for?
It's a pump in the room of irrigation to irrigate a recreational lot during the summer. It's a permit to the Idaho Department of Lands, it's a water resources type permit.
And it's a permit, the request, the requester is Travis and Kathy Chain. Their mailing address is eight oh one East Second Avenue in Post Falls.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Is it crossing the road?
No. No.
It's, they're just notifying us because it's in Benoit County. It's a permit to divert water out of a river to water their lot, like we do in Scott Park, for example, or in Irvin, it's that type, kind of application.
Okay.
And we just have a chance to comment if we, if we want to.
Feel it's inappropriate, that's saying all that, if it feels appropriate, we do nothing.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Want to do anything about it or not?
I move we do nothing.
Twelve, that's next Friday, isn't it, Dee?
This Friday.
Yes, this Friday.
Yeah. Ten AM in, uh.
At the Cootney, admin.
Down there, yeah.
For that, Judy, would you, I'd like to bring up the IDL land acquisition, give them an update.
Yeah, it's.
For the discussion items.
It's on here somewhere.
No, for the.
Oh, for here?
For Friday's.
Okay, you want, so you want to get an element?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they had, well, four of them, they had discussion items at the very last, so this one, so that'd be one of them.
Okay. I'll put that on there. We'll let him know.
BOE Training, based in Texas.
Um, yeah, I think I emailed this to.
Yeah.
You guys, just to, just to see if you guys were interested that May fifteenth, so Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday in Post Falls and Thursday in Los.
I went to that a few years ago, it actually was pretty beneficial when I was, I was supposed to commissioner. And I've got some changes, wouldn't mind going, but I kind of play farmer, my day job is farmer, so it's that time here, so. If you, if you have a chance, Bob, you might want to try to go to that, probably be out of town on May.
Department of Land, fourteen, what's that?
I, I put that in there, I just, I, I called from Seth Craig. And he met with some people in Boise that we're working with, trying to, trying to get some compensation out of that Department of Lands for all the land they want to purchase. And so we discussed, he's got a researcher down there, he's gonna try to gather information of how much land in each county is affected. And with the tax liability, tax revenue they're losing per county. And so you can get something going to figure out a game plan to move forward with this IDL land arm to get some sort of compensation, pay some little taxes to help out with counties that are donor counties and not just, just receiving counties.
How many counties has hurt the SAGs?
Probably at least a five or six, more than, any, any county.
But they're not hurt like we are.
Yeah, well, Benoit County's ground zero for that. Because we've got high yielding timberland and sawmills nearby. I would say Idaho County would be probably hurt worse than anybody because they've got quarter million acres in timberland and a real small county base. You wind up having donor counties and receiving counties, counties that give more to the state than you receive. And that's, that's something that Seth was gonna try to establish. And there's also more than timberland, there's also grazing land, farmland, and, let's see. Well, there's mineral resources, but that's a different story. We're just seeing how Texas counties, because they still got a hundred and fifty plus million dollars in their coffers to purchase more land, which, you know, Benoit County makes us, or ground zero makes us look like toast, so.
What type of a plan are they trying to come up with to compensate this for taxes?
From the land board, nothing yet. The only thing they've done is they established interim committee to look at it. Look at how it affects local jurisdictions and the governor and Lawrence Denny are on that committee. And I think that's, that's a good thing because they both understand, I think, our plight is, that's what they're doing to us. I told Seth the other day, I said, well, if the federal government came into the state of Idaho with, you know, billions of dollars to take money out of the state to purchase up state assets, I think everybody, all our state legislatures and US congressmen would be in uproar over it. And that's the same thing that the states have done to the counties and local jurisdictions, so. Because something needs to be addressed.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we keep, keep it in the forefront, then maybe something will happen.
Fifteen, Dee.
We got a notice from LTAC that our road safety improvement grant was, was funded. We've got a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That was one.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim Rowe, he can probably tell you more about that project.
So it was the Benoit and those high accident locations, we talked about improving those and we were successful. So about this October, when the next year pulls over, we can look at getting started.
So we can go from the end of the blacktop south there, can't we?
There's guardrails and things like that.
We, yeah, the specific part is just the two high accident spots. We pick those up and then use the money we have and try and improve the safety of the road where we can. It's not a ton of money, but it's a start.
Yeah, it all helps.
And at this point, we only have, just that we were awarded that, I think they'll send us later something that we accept, but I don't have that yet to sign off on.
And then sixteen, we didn't get it then, huh?
We didn't get it, is that the one, the St. Ray's River Road?
St. Mary's River Road, yeah.
We've been unsuccessful on that one for several times now.
What are we missing on that?
I don't know if it fits that program very well, I was gonna talk to you.
How do we get something that does fit in there?
There's another, there's other programs through LTAC that might fit it better. And I thought this next year when we come around, we can talk about where's the best program for that road.
Seventeen.
That is a letter from Luke Clausen. He is the one who is currently working on like a small subdivision, riverfront homesites. He is looking for a variance. He wants to only have to do one community well, rather than, I do believe, four wells for each. He has four lots out there. So I think he wants to do one well for the four lots. And then also variance on the culvert length, reduce from thirty foot to twenty foot. And apparently the twenty foot culverts are already in, and he doesn't want to have to change them out.
Where's that at?
Commissioners, this property is out on Cottonwood Drive. It's the property that was approved for a subdivision.
Oh, in the corner there.
Yeah, it's approved for a subdivision some years ago, he came in, um, and he has a timeframe to get his, his project done. He came in a few months ago and asked for an extension on that timeframe, which he was granted. Now this, uh, he terms it as a variance and that's okay, it's really not a variance. What you did is you approved a preliminary plat and now he's asking that, um, you allow an amendment or a change to that preliminary plat. I think that you need to take this under advisement, um, there's a good chance it needs to go in front of the planning zoning commission because it's a subdivision.
And the, on the water thing, that would be up to DEQ, wasn't it, on the well? Is one well adequate, if it is then...
Yeah, there's a DEQ process for that.
There's a couple, there's some things that need to be looked into on both avenues on this and, um, the road width was, was clearly stated, the culvert width was clearly stated on the, the plat, I think they just missed it in construction or messed up in construction.
That's not an issue, you're gonna have to widen them out, twenty foot, don't do it.
Twenty feet, two inches.
And then the, the well question, I think we need to look at that and the basis of seeing...
It's a bit hard to put five foot extensions on each end, maybe thirty feet.
So we'll take it under advisement, huh?
We'll take it under advisement and discuss this further. Another second, Bob.
Eighteen.
Oh, this is just, um, oh, the SRS forest money. So it says we should be getting sixty, sixty-seven thousand, um, lists all the counties there and that's our share. Although I think I just got an email this morning saying that some of that money might get, um, sequestered, so I don't know if we're gonna get the full amount or not.
Well, you get it eventually, but it takes sometimes years, years to get it.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Nineteen, Dee.
So River Plate State's, um, homeowners association, they've sent a couple letters in requesting maintenance and, and now that the, the weather's getting better, that's, um, they want to reiterate...
That Morrison's?
Yeah, yeah, it is. Um, they're requesting, is there any way that the ditches can be, can be cleaned?
Yeah, I looked at it.
Okay, and then schedule some, I think, pavement repairs for the summer, okay.
So they're coming, maybe, or...
Yeah, paved. Felt like tracks, doesn't it? Twenty, solid waste collection discussion, that only should take a minute.
So Commissioner Short asked me to put that on the...
We have a problem, I don't know if it's on your side, due to fill or just out there, but on the weekends, uh, by Monday morning, the dumpsters are overflowing onto the ground. And I called, uh, Waste Disposal Company and talked to them about that and this lot, and they did pick up, uh, nice and clean, but they've been letting it go on weekends. I don't know what their schedule is, I thought maybe we should discuss that, I don't know, your side, the hills, the same or not.
Well, it, uh, they were pretty full Sunday evening, I know that, what they actually dumped on Saturday and then by Sunday evening, they're, they're clear full. And we actually pay the company to come and do that, to call it extras, so they can pay to dump it if more than once, or more than what's on their schedule. It's not like they do it for free, so all you gotta do is drive out there and pick it up if they have, if they have the crew to do it.
They have been, when they do dump them, they've been keeping on area a lot tighter than they have been past, but I'm pretty upset, uh, the morning, Monday morning week ago, I, you know, we're calling on the ground, I don't know if they answered to, but, I don't know, does the dumpster need site? Or just make sure that he's open on Sunday?
Has, uh, the same, the dumpster's been there for years.
But we're getting more people.
Yeah, yeah, so you may, if you're collecting more, I know at the bills, you know, we're told three hundred and seventy tons of garbage last, uh, two weeks over to, uh, Mizzou, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of material, yeah.
See, we're, we're actually hauling more than so shone is. That's what they say, so... So we...
We're hauling more than what?
So shone.
I'd say if you have, uh, if they're constantly full, like I had to request another dumpster plumber a year while back and, uh, because they were just, they just couldn't keep up.
Well, we have to shoot request from one more at least for the, the three sites up there.
Well, yeah, there's a lot more, a lot more, a lot more houses up there, isn't it?
So is the one on, which, which is the worst?
One of which I think is actually the worst. Big mightages is, well, you might even say it's, they're all pretty equal.
Equal.
Last Monday morning, it was one of them, if you can throw them up high enough to stay on the dumpster.
We need them, we need them.
Yeah.
So, call them, Dee. And find, you know, and ask them where they're at on Sundays, 'cause I know they're there, they weren't ever Sunday.
They did this yesterday, and, uh...
Okay.
The dumpster at, uh, at Rennel Road was full of old, uh, with somebody's, uh, construction, construction waste and everything, it was kinda frustrating.
Well, if you're gonna say last Monday when they did come out and dump them, that afternoon, somebody tore down an old building or something, it threw go wood and metal and everything else in the dumpster, and that should've gone straight to the landfill.
You gotta get the sheriff's, what?
Well, you have to, you have to take his lawn, his lawn chair out there and sit and watch.
Run it.
Anything that's at a dumpster on the ground is not in the woods somewhere, that's the way you gotta think about that.
I, I agree with that the whole heart of it, but you do need, that's a, besides the sanitation part, but it's an awful lot of sore on a level like that.
Yeah, looks like hell. Twenty-one, Dee.
So, um, I know you guys had, you know, talked about maybe getting our own trailer or whatever, did all, pick up the oversized items out of it?
Yeah.
So, um, Brian Mueller, the St. Mary's Waste Management, brought in this little flyer saying he has, he has sorted that prior, if we...
Let me look.
We bring it, you fill it, we take it away, that too.
I wonder, I didn't talk to him per se, but I wonder if he would do that for us, if, or Dee, but maybe that would be easier than trying to get our own guys to do it.
They'll lift it on there though. See, that's...
So he didn't know if he wanted to keep that in mind, and he'll have that service available?
Yeah, we, we could, but you got, you gotta be able to, this is just...
Okay, that just...
Yeah. You still gotta have the guy, hold on.
Okay.
Everybody get the road group, come on, they got a lot of full trucks of trash and all, so... They're right now, right now, busy, you know, making work of the roads, so, I don't wanna take away from that.
Yeah, we need to, we need to put one of them little trucks together, it's just gotta do it. Dee, twenty-two.
Okay, so this is the rock storage lease agreement that Mariah drafted.
And it, Commissioner, this is a follow-up on the other agreement that we had with Rocky Road LLC and it's, um, just a, a little agreement to allow the county to stop, to store, stockpile the rock on the property. Primarily Commissioner Lambert has been involved with, with this, um, agreement, negotiating it.
So you got a contract then, okay.
Yeah, I didn't wanna have us approve this one until we were sure we had a, uh, rock crushing company come in to crush rock, because didn't wanna, didn't wanna rinse empty space and not have no rocks put on it, so I approve, we approve this agreement, I, I move, we approve this agreement.
So, any more discussion? All on clear with you, huh? Twenty-three.
Hold on, I need to sign it.
Oh, send it.
Um, Vince's, Maureen, the authorized signer from Rocky Road just here, should we have her sign it as well, Mariah? Or will you do that at a later time?
Yeah, we can have her sign it.
Okay.
We can go to...
You want to sign it?
Okay. I'd be delighted, thank you. It was working. Now, now it looks original for sure. Thank you, commissioners.
You ready?
Think so.
Okay.
So Woods Crushing...
Twenty-three.
Pauline is the next one, and that's who the, I'm assuming we'll be doing the crushing, um, for that rock storage that's going on Maureen's ground.
So this, um, went out to bid commissioners and Woods Crushing was the lowest bid, um, and you awarded that at your last meeting. This is a contract to, um, just put into writing what their terms are for that and, um, Jim, I don't know if you, Jim prepared it and I made some revisions to it and I don't know if you had a chance, but we'll get that in on.
Yeah, I think we're good to go and talk to Brian on the way down today, so we're just trying to find a time to get together and schedule it up. So we'll be meeting with him soon and I think the agreement will get it to him, you guys are the pool. They locked up and they'll get some rock crushing.
So can, Brian, we take, get those people, so...
Yeah.
I guess I can go today.
How much?
I think they sent it out, so we haven't worried it, with county did behind it.
Those are nice, looking much, do not worry about, it won't be that, so, so, well, book our auction things though.
And, uh, we'd want to do that today or what have to wait?
I'm gonna do, go for it.
Or if you can put it under this?
Uh, I called down there, they said about ninety-seven, ninety-four, five, ninety-seven. Almost two ten hours, but, uh, you guys today, so...
Well, use your dead mouth when you got a feeling about something.
Just cross it out or you want me to?
That's a bone, but shit away for it, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
They got it for ten and we don't have it, so that's...
Yeah.
That's how that works, so... You want us to sign that, Dee? Right?
Yes, it does need to be signed, um, maybe Dee can pick it up at the end of the meeting and get the signatures on that. She has a, a word letter that goes with it.
Okay.
Um, and a letter to the other, um, bidders that notifies them, so that'll go along with it and I think Dee just needs to finish those up and get signature on them.
Well, what are you, Jason, do you have anything on that?
As we talked about last time, the loose basin is opening, uh, claim period is open and we do have some, some area in Benewah County that is in that basin, so just to continue to remind her if we've got any citizens over there that need, need help with their water rights or, you know, to get the help they need on that, um. Any other, uh, still, still pending, um, nothing else for public session or...
Okay. You got executive session, so we put that to the end, are you doing now, what do we got, fif- fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes before Lauren shows up.
Right.
I haven't seen her in a hallway.
I mean, I can do half stuff for you guys, however you want, I can do it now, I can do it later, I know Sheriff is waiting for executive session as well.
We can do executive session then if we, uh, run out of time, then we just have another one again.
Okay, fair.
To commissioners, um, and how long, how long would you like us to speak to?
Well, you've used half of the time, I'm sure.
Right, I bet you did, yeah. Appreciate you having us, and I mean, you all know Maro, our board chair, this is Christine Crummer, she is...
Are you buying much?
Uh, well, we are going to Boundry County, um, hoping to be here, so...
Okay, well, we'll speak long enough. Oh, boy, that'd be...
So Christine Crummer, our, our fiscal officer, who, um, took the reins after, uh, we lost Mr. Fenton, um, a year ago, December. Um, and she'll be doing the budget presentation. Um, so, thank you, um, it's always my pleasure to, to come down and see you gentlemen. Um, and, uh, community members, there's always, um, a lot of folks from, um, um, the county here, which I appreciate. Um, so, in your packets, um, just, uh, for your review or clients served, reportable diseases, um, the budget presentation, um, the budget announcement, our budget hearing is twenty-three main, um, from eleven to twelve and would really appreciate it if you could be there, um, it calls for the chair, but if there's a resolution, we'd like to send someone else or if that's not gonna work out, I can, I can ring you in, um, I really would love to have you there. Um, the districting law and IDAPA, um, and, uh, just a brochure that, um, you may find interesting. So, um, I'm gonna speak for just a little bit about some of the highlights of the year and, um, as, as, as you well know, we're your local public health district. Um, and Idaho is, is unique in that we have seven health districts versus county health departments. Um, there's, there's almost, uh, twenty-eight hundred health, local health departments in the US. In Idaho, um, we have seven, um, so I think that's, it's, it's a good model, it seems, it seems to work. Um, we have two arms, really, we, um, have, uh, a focus on environmental and preparedness, if you will, and a, a focus on, um, physical health. Um, on the environmental side, um, uh, the regulatory arm, our authority is delegated to us through DEQ. It's their rules, um, that we, um, are the local boots on the ground enforcing, um, or working with folks to, um, uh, find solutions, I guess is a better way to put that. Um, in Benewah County, you know, you've got Jason and he's marvelous, um, and he works with, with your folks on certainly large projects, some of the RV parks, um, assisted living facilities and young living farms and doing septics and restaurant inspections. Um, and, uh, training food service workers, um, a few years back, um, the, a regulation was put into place that food service, food service workers, all, at least one per facility have to be trained in a, uh, a, a food safety course, um, or a serve safety course it's called, so we've done that, down there. Um, our preparums arm, um, you know, we work with, uh, your emergency response folks, um, we do carry a, um, a B for twenty-four seven that's hooked up with the state, it's called, we call it state comm, state communications. Some interesting things, primarily hazmat spills that we are, um, if it's near water, to, to help consult. Um, in Shoshone County, we have the institutional control program. Um, we talked a bit about environmental health and what they do with the food protection, the water systems, um, uh, childcare inspections or, yeah, I guess they're childcare inspections. Uh, we work with your solid waste department, um, and on land development, and my largest program is, is by far the subsurface sewage disposal. The clinical arm, um, you know, we, uh, do provide, um, some clinical services, including, primarily focused on women, um, having a, a lot of services with STVs, um, and HIV immunizations, um, and certainly, um, we're a proponent of flu shots. Um, we did have forty-nine deaths from flu in Idaho, um, this past season, flu season's officially over. Seven of those forty-nine deaths were from North Idaho. Um, uh, as you're, um, all well aware, Medicaid expansion passed with some sideboards this past session, so we'll see how that evolves and hopeful that's going to, um, be a positive thing for the counties and the indigent fund. Um, but at this point, um, we continue to, um, through, um, a program that we have with a waiver, be able to provide, um, breast cancer treatment, um, if someone is diagnosed, um, through this program. Um, and in Benewah County, there's one... And in Benewah County, there was one breast cancer diagnosed and treated this year through that program. Gynecology, a thing unique to public health with reportable diseases, and that is in your packet. In Benewah County, there's, you know, there's seventy-two reportable diseases, and they're reportable for diseases for reasons, they're communicable, and public health can come in, mitigate or stop that spread, and then we can, you know, prevent a further spread of those diseases this year. In Benewah County, there were seventy-five diseases reported to us that we followed up on. Nothing really out of the norm this year, other than our sexually transmitted diseases we're seeing throughout North Idaho. Certainly, chlamydia is always number one. We're seeing more diarrhea, and with that also some marsiphylis, which is concerning. So we work with communities to try to prevent that spread. And otherwise, some hepatitis C in, uh, chronic hepatitis C in Benewah County, but really nothing too alarming. We did have a case of tick-form paralysis in a child in Newton County that was interesting. It was a, it's a tick that causes a, or ascending paralysis via neurotoxin. But once you take that tick off, all better, so that was, that is good. We did have some Lyme disease, but it was imported from the East Coast, and that was Bonner County. And outbreaks, I think we had fifteen outbreaks this year. None of them were in Benewah County though, primarily associated with assisted living and schools, norovirus and flu. And with that, if there's not any questions... Oh, I wanted to also touch bases on some of the other programs in our clinical arm. Certainly the WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, providing food vouchers to our women that qualify for the program. We do some oral health services in schools, providing sealants with contracted hygienist. Some diabetes prevention and tobacco cessation. Fit and Fall, which is a popular program that we have volunteers working with... I don't want to say elderly, because I certainly would call back with the program, but it's kind of an exercise thing that we do throughout the five northern counties. Opioids, we are working closely with our community partners, kind of a four-tiered approach, like in harm reduction, prevention, and access to treatment and community resources. We have a lot of, a lot of interest, a lot of momentum in looking at how we, as a five-county region, can address this epidemic that is opioids. I am seeing with some ER data that's combined with the five northern counties, or actually not, this is not the ER data, this is the prescription monitoring program, that we are seeing a leveling off of number of prescriptions of opioids and an increase, sharp increase in the suboxone, which is a medically assisted therapy. So, at any rate, the prescriptions aren't increasing, except maybe in Boundary County they're not, the curve isn't quite leveling off in the number of prescriptions. Our Nurse Family Partnership and Parents' Teacher Program, kind of in conjunction with what we're doing with... The legislature last, last session asked the health districts to put together a panel, a citizen review panel, we're actually meeting today, of seven community members. We have one from Benewah County, so we would help, along with some folks from the other counties. Our charge is to look at every record that's in the child protective system that's over a hundred and twenty days, and make recommendations to the legislature as to what could be done, or are there trends? And certainly, of course, what you see when you look at these, these cases is, you know, of children that have been put into the CPS system, you know, drug and alcohol use is the primary thing that I'm seeing that's associated with many of these cases that are over a hundred and twenty days. It's a Herculean task. The committee can't get through more than twenty to thirty records in a three-hour period. But we continue to make quarterly reports to the legislatures, and we'll see what, what happens there. But as part of the prevention side of that, they've, our Nurse Family Partnership will, we send an RN. It's all voluntary, but a woman who's pregnant can have an RN visit her until the baby is born and two years old. And primarily, these are women that maybe don't have good oral models and have some circumstances that this is really helpful to guide them through the system. As well as our Parents' Teacher Program can work with families that are actually in the CPS system and try to prevent them from having their children taken away. And with that, I am going to turn this over to Christine.
Thank you. So looking at FY twenty budget, what I thought I would do is just do a high-level presentation like we did at the last board meeting. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask the question.
Christine, may I say one more thing?
Yes.
So, again, this year we're going to ask for a zero percent increase. And Christine, we'll go into the details on that, and it is going to result in a slight decrease to the county contribution from Benewah County. Page seven.
Page seven.
All right, Christine.
So on page three, we'll do a review of the state funding process. This just explains that sixty-seven percent of the funding comes from the state. They match sixty-seven percent of county funding. At a minimum, they provide the sixty-seven percent. The larger sheet here that I handed out, which is more user-friendly, is the state funding worksheet for FY twenty. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see that the state has appropriated nine point six million dollars for all seven health districts. The amount that will be given to District One is one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. If we go down to the columns, the first three columns here on the left, this is the sixty-seven percent match to county appropriations. So they are contributing eight hundred and thirteen thousand, forty-five dollars towards the match that was provided from all counties last year. The remaining thirty-three percent received from the state is allocated across different categories, such as minimum, infrastructure, poverty, population, and the HIPSAS score, the Health Professional Shortage Area Score. One thing to mention here is, if you recall, last year, we also asked for a zero percent increase. Had we asked for, if I say and use as an example, three percent, if we had requested a three percent increase from the counties, the state appropriation would have been larger to District One by approximately twenty-one thousand dollars. So, in not requesting additional funds from the counties, it does decrease the amount of the state funding that we do receive. We can also see, if you look down under tax effort here, if we want to look at a comparison as to what the other districts are receiving, for example, excuse me. I apologize, I just lost my train of thought. Thank you. District Five is receiving, why, excuse me, one million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in county contributions, compared to our one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand. So they have exceeded the amount of county appropriation that they're receiving, and they're actually a smaller district, smaller in population, smaller in tax assessments, generally smaller all the way around. If we move on, we...
The one that receives two million, three hundred thousand, which district, what seems to be that district?
That would be Ada County and the other, the other counties associated, but just in four.
And if you, if, thank you, Commissioner, and they're a four-county region. So you can imagine of that two point three million in county contribution, Ada is carrying the bulk of that, I would imagine.
But they also have four hundred thousand people versus ninety-three hundred.
Right. And offices in three counties of those four.
Are there any other questions on the state appropriation? So if we move on to page five, it discusses the county funding. And this is also set in Idaho code. And county funding will be allocated based on seventy percent of population and thirty percent based on the taxable market value of the property valuations. And moving on to page six, this is basically the statistics that we use to determine the county appropriation. And this sheet shows the change between fiscal year twenty and fiscal year nineteen, the current year that we're in. The upper portion is the population, and you can see for Benewah County, the change based on the two thousand eighteen population estimates from the U.S. Census Bureau. Benewah County increased by forty-two individuals. The lower portion takes into account the valuation, the property assessments. And Benewah County, the increase was ninety-four million, three hundred and forty-six thousand. So we take these numbers and move to page seven of your slide, and this will determine the change in your allocation, your county appropriation in FY twenty. So if we just go straight to the bottom, the summary, you can see that the allocation is decreased by three hundred and forty-three dollars this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty. Last year, we requested one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand in county appropriations. And as Laura said, we're not asking for an increase in appropriations for this fiscal year. But because of the change in population and the change in valuation, the shift in drift, your appropriation has decreased by three hundred and forty-three thousand. You can see where Cooney County, or, excuse me, three hundred and forty-three dollars. You can see that...
You like the first one.
Even hate that.
You can, yeah, you can see that...
What are you doing to us?
Well, see, if you're awake, and you are, you can see that Cooney County is bearing the brunt of the change. Their appropriation has increased by three thousand, five hundred dollars. The next page is just an illustration as to the percentage change in county funding over the last nine years. You can see that in three of the nine years, the district has requested no increase in county funding. So over the nine-year period, the total increase is fourteen point five percent. But on average, over that nine-year span, it's only one point six one percent. Your next page, this is per capita funding, and what we're doing here is we're looking at the budget in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety actual dollars, compared to the two thousand twenty budget of twelve million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, compared to the nineteen ninety budget of two point seven million dollars. If we take that and we convert it to today's dollars, the nineteen ninety budget would be five point four million, compared to the twelve point seven. And then at the very bottom, you can see the per capita change. In nineteen ninety, adjusted to today's dollars, the cost per individual in supporting the health district was forty-four dollars and eight cents. Out of that, the county contributed eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. If we look at the two thousand twenty budget, we can see that now the district is contributing forty-two dollars, forty-three dollars rounded, compared to the five dollars contributed by the county now. So the health district is contributing eighty percent compared to twenty-nine point three, excuse me, sixty-six percent in nineteen ninety. And a majority of that is due to additional services that we're providing, fee-based services, and additional grants that we're receiving. So the last page shows the two thousand twenty budget in summary. So the FY twenty budget is twelve million, eight hundred thousand, compared to twelve million, one hundred thousand for this fiscal year. It's an increase of six hundred and ninety-five thousand of five point seven percent. The majority of the increase is due to several new grants that we have received. One is the Parents' Teachers. That was, that was three hundred and thirteen thousand that we've received. And another one is the ODP grant, which is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year for the next five years. And that is primarily the reason for the change in the budget. If you like, the prior, the back pages, if you'd like to see the absolute detail as to the change, the change in personnel, change in operating, we can look at that if you want to go to that level of detail. But overall, the budget has increased six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars or five point seven percent. If we look at the page that has the pie chart... We can see that thirty-four percent of the district, the district's budget, is coming from fees. Forty-five percent is coming from contracts. Nine percent of the district's budget is coming from county funding. And ten percent is coming from state funding. And then two percent is just miscellaneous, such as interest or donations. Would you like me to drill...
Which page was that, five, six?
Sixteen. Would you like me to drill down on any details? Do you have any specific questions that you'd like me to address?
I agree.
So once again...
The state's budget's increasing, how much percent is this year, about three percent?
Uh, the total budget is increasing about five point seven percent. Due primarily to a couple of contracts that the state is... The one thing we should also mention is, this year FY nineteen, we had a two-month premium insurance holiday, which kept our insurance premiums down to eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars per individual. For fiscal year twenty, we won't have the premium holiday, but we'll have a rate reduction to where they can keep the insurance premium down to eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Anything, uh, for us?
Pardon me?
The state, the state, health insurance comes from the state. We're a hybrid agency, and we're accountable certainly to all fifteen county commissioners in the five northern counties. The governor's not our boss, and those are, but yet we use their Percy system, their payroll system.
Their service system.
Correct.
And we can expect that in FY twenty-one, we're hearing that the insurance rates could increase to about the fourteen thousand dollar range currently, because we will no longer have that insurance decrease. So the last two years were just special circumstances.
And then I think the last thing I'd ask you to touch on is the buildings.
The buildings. We have two facilities that currently have loans. One is the Sam Point Building, and the other is the Hayden Building. Benewah is clear, free and clear, no loan on that. Currently, the Hayden facility, we owe one point nine million, and Sam Point, one point three. We're total of three point three six million dollars. And we're hoping to, the board has asked that we review our cash position and pay down... and pay down one of the mortgages. Most likely, it will probably be the Sandpoint Building, since that interest rate is due to renew, and it carries the larger interest rate than the Hayden building. And with that, again, twenty-three May, eleven o'clock. Let me know if you'd like to call in, we'd love to have you in person. All of you are welcome. But the code does call for the chair unless you want to make a resolution, and that works as well. Just would love to have you there and support on my budget. One last thing, a long-tenured nurse will be resigning or retiring, I guess, in June. Ms. Kaderich.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, and members of the commission. I would like to comment that Laura is becoming quite well-recognized throughout the entire state of Idaho with her work with suicide prevention. It's going to be an important issue, and she's working hard on that throughout the state. Just one month ago, Laura made a presentation to the Plummer Whirly School Board and the Tribal School Board in a joint meeting, and gave a presentation to those two school boards. And we appreciate the work that she is doing in this area of suicide prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. And I do, I think suicide is something that touches us all. And if I look at what's going on in Benalaw County, calendar year seventeen is compared to, and this is coroner data, not vital stats data, but calendar year seventeen, there were three suicides in Benalaw. Five countywide, there were fifty. Calendar year eighteen, per the county coroners, there were two suicides in Benalaw, sixty-one, five-county region. In 2019, first quarter, January, February, March, there was one in Benalaw in March. And there were sixteen total in the first quarter.
Where was that at, also, Cooten?
In calendar year nineteen, the sixteen, there were eleven in Cooten. Cooten, in 2018, there were twenty-nine in Cooten. In twenty, eighteen, there were twenty-nine in Cooten. Twenty eighteen, there were forty-two in Cooten. So we work with law enforcement. We have a group that needs monthly, in fact, we're meeting this week, I think on Wednesday at four, including law enforcement counselors, survivors of suicide who have lost a rough one, social workers, nurses. It's usually, we have eighteen to twenty around the table, looking at what tangible things can we do. One other thing we can do, and are doing is, is volunteering at gun shows. I mean, certainly, we are, the majority of the suicides we know are caused by gunshot wound, right? You don't get a second chance with, over fifty percent of our suicides are gunshot-related. And certainly, I'm a pro coroner, but I can have the honor of them. But if a loved one of mine was, I sensed something was up, I'd lock that gun up. So that's what we do at gun shows, is work with folks, give away gun locks, and just talk. I mean, a lot of people really just want to talk and share what the warning signs are. And we all play a role in suicide prevention, I believe that strongly. And that role for many of us is just an awareness of what's going on with our loved ones. And certainly, I know there's, I would, there's been some interest from Benalaw County. One of the things we do is a survivor support group. I have a volunteer, and this is all through a group of volunteers, who runs a survivor support group that's been needing for over ten years to work with folks that have lost some of their suicide, because it's a different kind of group. And she does a good job. So we will, we will see. It's hard to measure if you make a difference or not in suicide prevention, especially when I see numbers like this.
Everything helps, so to speak. You know, we've talked about that, meaning that, but that's, gotta have a feeling, you know?
Yeah, and it's an awareness, and people can just, you know, and know what the data is. I believe in looking at data, at our ER combined de-identified data. Who's presenting to the ER with unsuccessful attempts, what age groups? I mean, we know that, I mean, certainly, every suicide is a loss that can never be replaced. But who, the bulk of, I mean, the age groups of those that successfully complete, you know, it's the older white, older male, right? It's the older male, you know, forties to seventies. But who's presenting to the emergency room with unsuccessful attempts? Kids. I mean, certainly, there's older ones, but if you do it as a rate, we're seeing younger kids presenting to ER with unsuccessful attempts. I mean, it's a model. So with that, if there's no questions, I hope to see you on the twenty-third at eleven.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Hepatitis C chronic, across the board, Erie County had quite a few cases.
Right.
Is that very communicable, or how do you treat that?
It's more of a, it's more of a blood war disease. And it can be treated with interferon. I mean, it can affect your liver long-term. I think what happened back, I don't know, I lose like five, eight years ago, they started encouraging more testing, perhaps, so I think a lot of people that it was kind of silent there. You can get it through blood transfusions, ID drug use. Are, we're starting to see, I thought I'd kind of start to see some lesser now, but we're continuing to see the chronic Hep C new cases. HIV is another one that is on here. There's, there were fifteen new cases of HIV in the five northern counties this calendar year. I don't cite which county it's in because it's such a small community, but every year we have, we have new cases of HIV in the area. Caution.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Thank you, guys.
I'll try to make it short and quick for you guys. So Looney Looney is going, we're getting things progressing. We got Internet put in last Thursday. And when he was up mounting the equipment on the side of the building, he noticed that there's a pretty good-sized hole in the wall just under the soffit on the roofline facing Jefferson Street. So he suggested that somebody might want to get up there and put some tin or some mesh or something over it to keep birds and bees out of it this summer. So there was that. And then after we had the walls taken out, now there's some carpet damage where the walls were in the carpet. And I would just cover it up except this right where everybody walks in and out of the building. It's right in front of the front doors. So then there's two bids attached to that back there. One is for the guy that took the walls out, his bid, it's just the materials and the labor. The other one is another company out of Moscow that is materials, labor, and professionally cleaning all the rest of the carpets in the whole building. So I know you guys can't take action on it today, but for your review, and tell me what we're gonna, what we can or should do. There is also a big, if you look on the corner of the front reception desk there, there's a big black mold-like stain there. I don't know what that is, but the, both those bids were enough square footage to take that out too, to cover that whole area.
There's something to be replaced then, or?
What's that?
There's something to be replaced, or just cleaned up?
The only thing that I asked them to quote replacing was that front reception square where the walls came out and that black stain is that. And then the rest would just be cleaned. But we got the wall down, we got all the paint finished and fixed in there. My staff and I have been up there every night after work. We've cleaned the whole upstairs, washed the windows. We didn't wash the exterior windows, but we've done all the interior cleaning.
You need a longer ladder?
My husband says he has one, but if, I'm not sure his is actually that tall. Those windows on the front are pretty high up there. My solution, because I don't like heights, was to get a hose with a spray, air ring, spray them. But I don't know how effective that will be.
It is effective.
Okay, good.
They work.
I don't get more than about five feet off the ground. The top of my horse is about as high as I get, so. So there's that, and then I told you about the whole of the soffit. And then we, when we first talked about going up there, I'd asked if we could reserve one or two spaces for extension, just put extension parking for just for clientele. We'll, staff will still park out on the street, but I don't know if it was possible to do that. And if so, where to get signs made to do that, and how much those would cost.
If we do, we have a company we work with for road street signs.
Okay.
We can run it to the county.
Okay, yeah, so.
We'll probably get the signs, we'll just have to say, we need to, we can buy this space.
Right, and then, because we're sharing with the meal site, and so that's right. It'd be nice if there was at least just one, that if somebody needed to run in and grab something, they don't have to drive around the hospital fifty times to run in and drop something off.
Yeah, right.
And then, I don't know where we left it, DeeDee with the janitorial services. I just wanted to check on that, did the, I know you had talked to the hospital at one point about it, but. So where are we at? They did, for a day a week. Okay. Four hours. Okay, very big. So we'll just clean up the rest of the time. We're not too messy, so I think we can handle that. That would be great. That's all I had. Anybody have any questions for me besides that?
Yeah, plenty of questions.
I know you guys are running behind. Our summer intern and summer hire started today, so we are jam-packed on there right now. I'm gonna get them started on packing stuff up. What's the process for once we get, you guys get a chance to make a decision on the flooring and take care of that? What's the process for getting everything moved out of the basement and up? Do I need to schedule something for that? Do we need to get ahold of somebody, what's the, what's?
How much do I, you got to move?
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven desks, about ten filing cabinets, and our whole storage room, two storage rooms. So, and a copier. The copier is the tricky one.
What we probably will do is kind of split it up a little bit, move part of it. Can't take the whole crew out of the shop to move all that, but I'll run them up there and move a bunch of the heavy stuff.
Perfect.
And then.
We're good with moving like our little storage boxes and stuff. It's the file cabinets, the desks. And then the copier, we did call the company that we bought the copier from about moving, and it is like twelve hundred dollars to have them move it. And I said, yeah, I don't think we want to do that. But they did say it's pretty sensitive, so just want you to tweak a piece of plastic.
Just be careful.
Yeah, okay, so.
Sorry, the sheriff's labor program might be available to move some of that heavier stuff also, coordinating with the sheriff, I don't know what's available.
Right, the sheriff's labor program.
I will move it. I don't need the sheriff's labor program.
Well, so how do I arrange that then? Just get ahold of you, or?
I'll leave my phone off. Now let me know.
Okay.
You know, actually, for this, we should probably get these, we're going to use this for evaluation.
It would be nice, because that's the only thing stopping us from moving is that.
Blue well gone.
I just didn't want to be trucking stuff across, you know, all that stuff.
Get it done, get it done.
Yep, so the, the.
You see, one bid was two twenty.
They're only like a hundred dollars difference, but one includes the cleaning of all the carpets where the other one didn't, so that's the difference.
That'd be Superior Floors.
Yeah.
We have to do, I just think, right, and stuff coming.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I should just call Superior Floors and have them get scheduled?
If that's what you want.
Well, I thought that was the better deal, since they're cleaning all the carpets too professionally and. And actually, the flooring and the labor was cheaper from them.
And we approved, you know, upgraded some sort of things.
Okay, well, I will give them a call today then. So appreciate your guys' time.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to wait two weeks.
I know, yeah. And also, I was like, I'd really like to be by June one, because we start day cams June one, so. Awesome, thank you, guys, I appreciate your time. Thank you, DeeDee.
We're past the public comment.
I was just related to her. I would, before you were speaking about that, I was thinking about your move, and I was thinking you might be able to corral some of the older kids that you guys have all put through all the wonderful four-age programs. And, you know, schools out for summer from the college kids, you can wrestle some of those KYD kids.
I put a, yeah, I put a "we need" out in the newsletter, so we'll see if anybody's not working and can do it.
Some community service there.
Yes, that's what I put, and I told them that we were in need of some cleaning. And like you said, as a community service project for their club, and nobody showed up. Thanks, you guys, I appreciate your time.
Al been out there?
I haven't seen him. You know, he mentioned it to me in passing a couple of weeks ago. And I don't, I don't know if he remembered.
Because I've already got it.
Exactly. Was there any other public comment? More ready for you to?
I have three items for you today regarding the St. Mary's Airport projects. The first one I will present is a recommendation of award for the segmented circle and wind cone project that built in bids on May the second. The county received five bids for that project from a number of bidders. And based on K.O. engineer's review of the bids, a recommendation was that the low bidder received from Mountain Dove Construction Company was non-responsive due to two items in their bid associated with not completing bid forms either in full or in format. Meaning they completed it but not correctly. And based on that review, we'd recommended that they be rejected and award be made to the second low bidder, being Stillwater Electric Company. Just to provide a little detail on that, the first irregularity that was noted in the low bidder from Mountain Dove was the designation of subcontractors and suppliers form. They did not list any subcontractors and suppliers, which was a requirement of the form. And this project in particular requires the purchase of a new wind cone and wind cone tower for the airport. Therefore, that by default is a supplier, which was not listed. And further, in an FAA-funded project, the equipment's required to be purchased from a certified FAA supplier of a wind cone. So it can't just be manufactured or bought or made off.
From the same company that put the line out?
No, there's a number of companies that are certified that they could have purchased it from. But from this standpoint, they should have listed whoever they were going to be purchasing it from. And the second informality that was noted on their bid was the certification of Buy American compliance, which is a requirement that the sponsors obligated to as it receives federal funding for the project. So the sponsor as a recipient of that funding is required to ensure that the materials provided for the project are either a hundred percent American-made or there are waivers associated with that. And the contractor has to designate whether they plan to meet a hundred percent Buy American or meet one of those waivers. And then this -- And in this particular case, for whatever reason, the contractor seemed to just, he checked all the boxes on the form, which is non-responsive. It clearly states, unfortunately, on the form, to either check one box, you know, how you plan to meet the requirements, and then submit the form, and the bidder submitted all of the boxes checked for some reason. So those are the two items that were noted in our review of the bids for the segmented wind cone project.
Now, it's 14% over your estimated costs. Does it still go within the parameters of what the FAA wants, or?
Yes, so I think with the number of bids that we've received, five is a good number of bids. And I think there's plenty of justification to show the FAA that, you know, these prices are paramount of value. But yeah, it is a little bit $10,000. It's a relatively small project, so, I mean, that's another justification of, you know, it's $10,000 over, which is a high percentage, but, you know, not necessarily that great of amount.
Did you need a push on that one, individually, or one?
Uh, we would do individuals. I've got the second one to discuss after this one. But yeah, we would be requesting that we be able to proceed with award of the project in any way that the commissioners see fit, just so that we can begin receiving that funding from the FAA.
Now, Stillwater Electric, I think you need to accuse yourself on that one, don't you?
Okay.
I move we approve Stillwater Electric for the segment, was that segmented circle? Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say hi.
The second one is the second project that's going on at the airport. This is the partial airport primary fence project. We also opened bids on that project on May 2nd. We received four bids for that project. And in this case, following air review, we did note one minor correction to the low bidder, the low bidder being Quality Fencing and Construction Company. They had a minor multiplication issue between unit prices and quantities that resulted in their bid price being increased by 30 cents. I'm not sure if they rounded or what, but it's a pretty minor issue. And based on air review, we recommended that the county award that project to the low bidder in Quality Fencing and Construction Company in the amount of $244,000, $799.30.
I move we forward the bid to Quality Fencing and Construction. So, what were the low bids?
I believe they were out of Spokane.
Okay, yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say hi.
And then the last item I have for you is the joint application. I was here, I believe, last month, and there were some corrections noted to the joint application. Again, just to review, this is a permit to the Corps to allow the installation of the fence based on the site disturbance that will be completed as basically associated with the augering of the fence post. The form that I originally submitted had some incorrect items associated with the adjacent property owner information, and I neglected to include the three exhibits that we prepared for the application. So I have that application here for your review with the attachments and the new property owner information.
These property owners, the city?
Uh, well, no, we're required to list every adjacent owner to the airport, so they were a number of our own.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Sign this.
Just on that one yellow tab right there is the only one that we need. Yeah, I think she got it. Those are all the items I have. Any questions regarding the airport projects that I can answer at this time?
No.
Trey, I did ask that the commissioners, they had to have in their packet that easement agreement with, for the fence with the city. And my understanding is that you have a correction to the legal description for the location of the fence?
Uh, it's more associated with the exhibit that I initially provided was in draft format. It's got an aerial image, gives a good idea of where the fence will actually be installed in the easement. But for the legal documentation and filing of the easement, we'll have a more professional exhibit prepared that actually shows bearings of all the easement lines and things like that, mine etations associated with the property corners out there. But it doesn't change the location of the easement, it's just for the actual filing and execution of the easement. And I'll be submitting that to you probably mid this week, and maybe we can get that submitted over to the city right after that, and maybe be approved later this month.
So the city has the same draft agreement. I don't know if you wanted to move forward with approving a condition on the middle of that additional exhibit, and that way we can move it forward and you could submit it to the FAA? I know there's a deadline there, or whatever you think is preferable.
That would be great. If the county is willing to do that, that would allow us to present straight to the FAA and get their approval, because that is a third stakeholder that will be required to review that before we can officially execute it and get it filed on the record.
For sure, I think that would be appropriate.
So what's the timeline on completed projects?
Uh, we are looking to start construction either late July or August sometime. Flexible timeline associated with the projects overall, we're gonna get it done before the snow flies this year. But the idea is to let the ground dry out, water levels go down before we get out there with heavy equipment and tear up the hayfields that are out on site. So overall, right now, we really don't have a set start date. We're gonna allow the contractors to work it into their schedule, but just want it to be done by the time the snow starts sitting on the ground. Most of these projects are not gonna be hindered by weather too much. It's just fence installs some gravel, segmented circle is just concrete. So it's not like paving where we need to get it in the ground before freezing temperatures. So I, we recommend it, do we do it later in the year just to help with the dryness of it?
They'll be down to hand at the end of July.
Okay, that's another great thing.
They'll get on there, anytime after that.
Yeah, great. Good information. And I don't think there's any events at the airport clients or anything like that that may be of an issue, you know? That would be the, for the fence easement. I don't know if they expect it from the city.
I move we approve the fence easement.
Any discussion? All in favor, say hi.
All right.
If you care.
All right, I'll get that over to you later this week.
The, we ought to get to show the county, because they're, Trey, Trey, you're in. Forest Service will be here in a little bit, but...